All right, good evening, everyone. If we could make our way to our seats. All right, good evening. I'm going to call tonight's Temecula City Council meeting to order. I'd like to acknowledge and let us give thanks to the Temecula Conservatory of Music for the prelude music. Thank you very much.[41.94][41.94][applause] It's always a wonderful addition to our meetings. We'll go ahead and start off with our invocation by Buck Longmore. And then our flag suit, I'm going to ask our former mayor and gentleman of honor this evening, Dr. Matt Ron to lead us in the pledge.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we are so thankful for you on this day. We would ask that you would give the city council members the wisdom and discernment as they need to decide on the many issues that affect the city. Please continue to guide, lead, and direct their actions as they try to be good stewards of the positions that you have placed them in. We also pray for the many men and women who serve and sacrifice for this great nation and lift them up to you and pray for them and their families. Lord, we thank you for all that you are doing and give all the honor and glory to you. In Jesus Christ's name, amen.
All right, and being the day after 9/11, let's go ahead and keep our first responders in mind as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Brown is absent. Councilmember Kelfis.
Here.
Mayor Schwank.
I'm here.
And Mayor Potem Stewart is absent.
All right, thank you very much. And next on the agenda is our presentations, but since our agenda is fairly light, we're going to crank through that, try to beat 23 minutes on the agenda, and then we're going to, and then we'll move to, yeah, 12 minutes. Okay, we'll do that. And then we're going to try to get to the meat of our evening is the presentation, a word of recognition to former councilmember Matt Ron. So we'll move to our board and commission reports and start with planning commission.
Welcome.
Welcome. Oh, I mean, thank you. Welcome to all of you. Congrats, Matt. Honoring you tonight. So I am the chair for the planning commission, and our commissioners are Bob Hegel, he's vice chair, Adam Ruiz, Hernando Solis, and Gary Watts. And we have a great team, awesome commission. And the main thing that we do is really hear, have hearings on anything new that's being built in the city, and we try to take some of the work off of the city council and make some of those decisions that we can do. Our last meeting was on September 6th. Next slide, please. And it was a long meeting. So we started with discussing the planning development overlay amendment for Linfield Christian School to adjust the boundaries for three existing planning areas. And really, the gist of it was that we were, we voted on the change on these boundaries that actually gave the school more, more usage for their land, for their school. And I think there was, we had some speakers there, there was some confusion as to what was being voted on. There wasn't a project being voted on at all. It was really just to, just to configure the boundaries so that the school could actually get started on some projects that they have. So we felt good about that decision, and the planning commission voted for one to recommend that to the city council for that overlay amendment. Next slide, please. We also reviewed a development plan application for a 288,269 square foot, 355 rooms, seven story, 91-foot full-service hotel to be located at Old Town Front Street and First Street. And staff recommended redesign of the project. They were not in compliance or what the development standards for the Old Town specific plan, so the commission voted 5-0 on that and agreeing with staff's recommendation. I think that's it. And our next meeting will be September 20th. Any questions?
Any questions for Chair Trudy Trehal?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. We'll move on to our public safety report.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and public. For the month of August 2023, Temecula Fire Department ran 817 calls in the city, eight of those being fires, four hazmats, 73 traffic collisions, 582 medical emergencies. And you could see the year-to-date is 6,723 calls. Next slide. Here's what the stations are running in each of your districts. Station 73 is the busiest for the month of August with 244. Next slide. And as far as fire prevention in the city, very busy still, still doing a lot of plan reviews and plan checks, 660 for the month of August. Construction inspections, 618, two special events, annual inspection, 359, and then public inquiries at City Hall 37. Next slide. Emergency management in the city has been very valuable in the last month. We had Tropical Storm Hillary, which they activated for. Good thing to report is not much damage in the city. And we had monitors throughout the city checking the creeks and any damage, and there was no real damage to any city property. They also provided some CPR and first aid training, stopped the bleed to the school district, and attended cybersecurity course. And all that planning goes into the support of the city in emergency operations and participated also in some winter storm claim classes. And we're pushing some of the packages from 2023, previous storms through CalOES and FEMA. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Chief? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, any public comments this evening?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have six public comments. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The rules are provided for on the agenda. First speaker is Maribel Sebastian, to be followed by Christine Ortiz.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, city councilmembers. Mayor, my name is Maribel Sebastian. I have been in mental health for over a decade. I hold a master's degree in psychology with emphasis in marriage and family therapy. And over the years, I have worked in the capacity of counselor in inpatient and outpatient settings such as crisis centers, residential facilities, and psychiatric hospitals. Prior to mental health, I worked in law enforcement. Day in and day out, I witnessed men and women be arrested for violent crimes with some being repeat offenders. Did you know that 70% of all state penitentiary inmates have spent time in the foster care system? Did you know that children removed from their homes have two to three times higher delinquency rates and are likely to enter the criminal justice system as adults? There are just some examples of the negative impact that it would have on children if they are removed from their homes and placed into the foster care system. Tonight, I am here in opposition of Assembly Bill 957. This dangerous bill, among many others, was recently passed in the House and Senate. This bill, if you weren't aware, would consider it abuse for a parent to not affirm a child's gender identity and would deny custody to non-affirming parents during custody disputes. This means that my children, your children, or grandchildren can be removed from their home if their gender ideology is not affirmed. Children can be removed from good, loving, stable homes depending on what gender they identify with for the day. Under a Senate Bill 665, public school administrators and counselors have the authority to remove the child from their home and place them in residential shelters, all without parental consent, even when there has been no accusation or evidence of abuse. We are currently seeing parental rights being attacked and stripped away. This is very concerning as the state of California believes it has the best interest of our children, which it does not. Statistics show that children who are removed are overwhelmed with feelings of abandonment, rejection, worthlessness, guilt, and helplessness. Separation from the family floods stress hormones throughout the child's brain and body, leading to depression, more suicide attempts, and more problems with alcohol abuse. Not only would the children be exposed to mental health issues, but they are also at risk of becoming victims of sex trafficking through the foster system. The impact can be profound and lifelong. I am pleading with you that, I am pleading with you that you please stand against these bills. Failure to act will cause more children to become wards of the state, which will expose them to abuse and trauma, which in the end will cost more tax-paying money. Please do the right thing and help preserve the family unit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Christine Ortiz, to be followed by Brad Bone.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Christine Ortiz, and I am a part of Great Oak High School's IB program, the International Black Laureate Program. And I just wanted to bring attention to a community event occurring on September 23rd in collaboration with the Temecula Rose Society. It will be at 10:00 a.m. at the Rose Haven Heritage Garden, and it is in honor of International Peace Day. And this is a collaboration between the International Black Laureate Students and the, the community's rose garden. At this event, we will be celebrating the cultural clubs at our school, and we will be putting on some cultural performances by our clubs, and it's a student-run event. And we would love to have the community involved. And there will be many activities for families, such as a scavenger hunt, and we will also be presenting the Peace Pole Project, which is an international project which connects our nations through peace poles, which describe a way of peace in several languages in order to present such connection. And we will also be holding some music, and it will be a picnic, and there will be a lot of family games involved as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can we have, can we get her, we have that information sent?
Yeah, she has a flyer. Did she hand a flyer to you?
She didn't, but we have her contact information. If you want to give me your flyer, that we can distribute it.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next speaker is Brad Bone, to be followed by Lee Behar.
Welcome. Just before you get started, Brad, we don't do videos. Yeah, so if you have a photo, you can show a photo, but videos, we don't do the video.
Hi, my name is Brad Bone. I'm with Temecula Children's Music Foundation. Me and my family moved here about 11 years ago. When we first moved here, I was working at a job, and I lost my job within four months. Started looking around the area, trying to figure out what to do. I saw there weren't a lot of orchestras in the area, and talking to a few people, it looks like California kind of started getting rid of the orchestras back in the 70s. And so I had a degree in music education, so I started teaching music out of my house and tried to figure out, wow, I wonder if we could actually create orchestras from these students? And so we did. And in the first year, we were able to build it up to two orchestras. And during that time, we've had 34 major concerts. We have three orchestras now. We have a top orchestra that's gone to Carnegie Hall in 2019. And we're taking that top orchestra right now in April to Austria on a 10-day tour of Austria, Salzburg, Prague, and Vienna. And so we are hoping that we can get some, some help and some support from the city. Back in 2019, we had help from the mayor at that time, Matt Ron, who I don't know if you guys know, is also a violinist. And
He told us, we know.
Yeah, you have to tell him later.
Yeah.
And he helped us to, to get the kids their cellos, who could rent cellos in New York City, so they'd have to put their cellos on the airplanes. And I know you guys have had experiences going internationally as a youth. It changes your perspective on the world. And especially if you heard some of the kids and the level they're playing at now, one of those students started 10 years ago, his name's Elliot Dahl. He's now 16, and he's one of the best violinists that I've ever seen. And he started when he was five years old. So it takes time to become an amazing musician, but giving these kids opportunities to go someplace international like this opens up their minds and their eyes to what the world is and what can be done, just like what's been said, why climb the mountain? Because it's there. Well, this is an awesome opportunity for these kids to go. And right now, all the families are providing and trying to pay for it all by themselves. But definitely with some help from the city and in the arts, that would be definitely helpful. So it's why I'm here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Lee Behar, to be followed by Heather Dinesh.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Lee Behar. I have been a resident here in the city of Temecula for 23, 23 years. I spent 20 years here as a law enforcement officer and now retired and now living in the harvesting area. One of the things that about Temecula is that I love this city. I've been all over the country. I've visited 37 states because I thought I was going to move, came right back to Temecula and set, and now live in the harvesting area. What I try to do is make our community a better place now that I'm retired, and that's why I carry glasses, because now I'm old. And what I'm trying to do now is whatever problems we have, I'm on the board for the, our harvesting area. And one of the issues that, that's being brought up is e-bikes. E-bikes in the city, over on the city, has been a problem, especially in the harvesting area. We have these motorcycles-type e-bikes that have been a problem. And I have an email here from the mayor that you did address it. And basically, what I'm here to do is trying to get an update of what's going, what, what are we doing in order to combat this problem of the electric bikes? They're going a little bit too fast in the harvest. If you've ever been to the harvesting area and walked along a lake, you'll find people in wheelchairs, you'll find people on scooters, you'll find little kids riding their bikes, you have elderly people. It's a very passive place to walk and enjoy your time. The problem is these e-bikes go well over 40 miles an hour, and they're, if they're going around that path, somebody's going to get hurt. And I don't want it to come to that level of somebody getting hurt before the city takes action on it. So I urge you guys to address it. I know that other cities have addressed it. I keep up with other cities also, what they're doing, and hopefully, our city is doing something about it. So I'm just trying to get an update if we can.
We can't do a back and forth, but I can share that we had a meeting first thing this morning with Captain Durham, our city manager, and others as well to talk about it. I can follow up with you offline on it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, take care. Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Heather Dinesh, to be followed by our last speaker, Stephanie Deza.
Good evening.
Good evening, city council. My name is Heather Dinesh. I am a bioethicist. I have taught both college-level nurses, medical students for several decades, almost now. I guess that gives away my age. I'm also an attorney, and I do have some concerns that I would like to bring to you all as a mother of three children. I have an eight-year-old, an 11-year-old, and a 12-year-old here in Temecula. We have lived here for seven years in the reserves. And also as an aunt to a niece that has, is going to be affected by some things that are going on here in our state. I have been made aware recently, and as you probably know, I'm not really a regular speaker here, so these are a deep concern to me, that there is an Assembly Bill. It's number 665 here in the state of California, that is basically going to allow a child as young as 12 to be able to just tell a counselor, okay, and be taken away from their parents. This is deeply troubling. There is no due process here. There is no parental consent. There is nothing except for a child who tells a counselor, I'm fine with that. You can take me and put me in a residential home and take me away from my parents. And the parents aren't even notified. I cannot imagine if this were to happen in my family. And I imagine that it will happen to a great deal of families here in California. I am also deeply concerned about Assembly Bill 957, which affects my own brother. This would allow a judge, or would require, I'm sorry, a judge to side for custody and visitation purposes with the parent who affirms a transgender child. Now let me give you a little bit of a background. My brother was married for 20 years, a girl from church. They had the same belief system. After the divorce, the wife left the church and allowed the daughter to start looking into transgender material and is now using this against my brother for custody and visitation rights. This is not something that should be required of a judge to violate our First Amendment rights. Our freedom of religion is at risk here. Our rights as parents are at risk here. And for whatever rights an aunt might have, I'm at risk here too, which is why I'm here. Thank you.
The next speaker is, and the last speaker is Stephanie Deza.
Good evening. Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Deza. I'm a resident of Temecula and a very concerned mother of two kids under the age of 14. I'm concerned for not only my children, but my relatives, my friends, and my neighbors' children. As a parent, we send our kids to school to learn, read, write, math, science, et cetera, not to consume drugs. When I read this bill of stocking of Narcan for school in case of a student or students get a fentanyl overdose, made me think that the school will also provide that opioids. Two, if anything, school should have supply with EpiPens in case of an allergy reaction from a bee sting or a food allergy. That would be more appropriate for a school to have. Tampons on boys, restrooms, many third, fourth, or fifth-years-old boys and girls don't even know what is a tampon. Why are they spending money on that? We should let them be kids and enjoy their childhood. That doesn't last long. Guarding their innocence should be our priority as parents and as a member of Temecula community. Protect our children from these absurd bills. Providing condoms for the teens as young as 13 years of age and not prohibiting the retail stores of selling them condoms to minors. Have you really stopped and think what this can lead to? It would be easier to get sexual transmitted disease, unplanned pregnancy, abortions, and long-term life with regret and sadness. These are kids. I challenge you to take a look at your pictures of your seventh grade and be honest if see, if you see, if there was something you did that now you regret. Please remember, children's brains are developing. Now you have the opportunity to choose what to bring to or not to our city Temecula. If California takes, chooses to pass all these insane and harmful bills, and we as a city do not take a stand for families, then it will be our fault when these consequences happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. All right, we'll move on to city council reports. Do my council colleagues have anything this evening? Do you have anything? No? Okay.
We have the first video, if we can, with CERT. Woman Jessica Alexander. Having served in the United States Marine Corps and as a former New York City police officer, safety for our city has always been my top priority. I am here with Michael Alfred, the city's emergency manager, because September is National Emergency Prepartness Month.
Thank you, Councilwoman Alexander. As a retired Navy sailor myself, we recognize the importance of being prepared for any emergency. Today, we will share four important points.
Number one is be prepared. Every household should have water, food, and supplies to last a minimum of three days and ideally two weeks. Disasters can lead to power outages, water disruptions, and/or shelter-in-place orders. And so we all need to rely on our own food supplies. Our city's website has an emergency kit checklist to ensure you have adequate supplies to be prepared in case a disaster strikes.
Number two, prepare or purchase a go-bag. Every member of your household should have a go-bag to take when evacuating. Backpacks that are filled with lifesaving items are available to purchase from the city, or you can create your own by using the city's three-minute bag checklist that's located online.
Number three, stay informed. Look at the city's website and Facebook page for information during an emergency. If an incident escalates, the city will use additional forms of communication. Importantly, I encourage you to sign up and receive the alerts from the city. Lastly, number four, get trained. In 95% of all emergencies, the victim or bystander provides the first immediate assistance on scene. Would you know what to do? I would love to see you and your family prepared at all times. Our city offers CPR, first aid training, stop the bleeding, and much more. I completed CERT training, and it provided the most up-to-date medical techniques that I can use to help my neighbors and my community. TCC volunteers play a critical role, helping our community and supporting our fire department and law enforcement during disasters. And we strongly encourage Temecula residents to apply if you are interested and committed.
And that's one reason we are here in front of one of our city CERT trailers. The city offers CERT training to Temecula residents, including those who may want to become a Temecula Citizen Corps volunteer. I would also encourage you to share this information with your neighbors. Being prepared in advance of an emergency or disaster can save lives, including your own. So what were those four points again?
Be prepared, have a go-bag, stay informed, and get trained. I just want to first off, thank the staff for all that they did to put that together. It is very important to ensure that we are prepared when a natural disaster does strike. So I just want to thank the staff for putting that together, and I think we're supposed to have a part two to that coming out in November, December. So, thank you. And the next item, I actually had five items I wanted to bring up, but I wanted to consolidate them into one. Over the last several, about last week or so, I've had many phone calls of residents calling me and concerns, and obviously, you've heard some of them already tonight. So I want to just be able to inform the public right now as to what we are facing as a city and as a state coming down, that there are bills currently right now sitting on Gavin Newsom's desk that are about to make a big impact on our city's families. And if you're not prepared and do not understand what that looks like, I want to make sure you're informed today. On a daily basis, Sacramento is hammering away at the foundation of our community, which is our families. They are terrorizing parents, children, and our local school board, one bill at a time. The behavior of the majority group of, of, the majority group and others in Sacramento is more like that of a domestic terrorist, posing a danger to our community as they intimidate and coerce our city government and citizens. Bills currently under consideration are being weaponized and will do nothing but destroy families and lead children to the destruction and death. It is our duty to speak out for the parents and the children in our community who are our most vulnerable. As local, as local officials, it is our responsibility to ensure that the well-being of our residents, families, and parents and children are met. We are all, we all swore an oath to support and defend the Constitution from all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that we swore to faithfully discharge the duties of office. Some may argue that it is not our role as a city council to get involved with laws and bills coming from Sacramento. However, I want to dispute that false statement right now by saying that our entire by saying that our entire city, our entire objective as city council is to create a community that stands for freedom and the American way and a far reach from government. Temecula should be a place where residents would feel protected while raising a family. At this point, why would a family want to raise it in a state where the parental rights are being stripped away one bill at a time? Families have been fleeing from our state in massive waves. Over two, the last two and a half years, our population here in Temecula has declined by approximately 4,000 residents. Once these bills are signed into law, we are going to see a greater mass exodus of Californians. The Sacramento swamp is manipulating and encouraging destructive behavior among children, pitting them against their own families. Sacramento is creating a fantasy land for minors and a predatory environment with no consequences. The signing of law, the signing into law of these bills gives children the green light to emancipate themselves and change their names and gender markers, effectively creating new identity that may or may not be shared with parents. Our legislative autocracy continually sexualizing children at younger and younger ages, distorting their minds and leading them into confusion, mental illness. The individuals writing and supporting these bills behave like demons, inciting children to come to pleasure island, living their lives with no rules, living for indulgence and embracing a what, a do what thou shalt do philosophy. What are some of these bills, you may ask? AB 223 permits minors to steal, to seal public records if they change their name and gender markers, effectively creating a new identity that may or may not be shared with parents. AB 665 gives mental health care providers, including public school counselors, the authority to determine whether a child as young as 12 years old should be placed in a residential shelter, all without parental consent, even when there has been no accusation or evidence of abuse. AB 957 creates a litmus test for parents in the state of California by codifying into law that failing to affirm a child's chosen gender identity, regardless of their age, will consider, will be considered determinal, uh, determ- detrimental, as I was, to their health, safety, and welfare. Consequently, parents who does not form their, affirm their child's chosen gender identity will be regarded as engaging in actions equivalent to child abuse. In child custody cases, the affirming parent will be given preference and the non-affirming parent will be considered less qualified parent. Let's go to the next one. AB 665, state sanctioned kidnapping. Says a counselor or counselor trainee can place a child as young as 12 years old in a residential shelter without requiring parental notification or consent, and no allegations of abuse are necessary, again, for this one, if this is going to move forward and happen. Here's another one. AB 1078 removes the authority of local school boards. It will prohibit school boards from removing obscene and pornographic material without the approval of unelected officials like superintendents or the California Department of Education. We cannot allow families to be stripped of the, we cannot allow families to be stripped of their children and hand it over to the state and placed into CPS systems that cannot keep up with the amount of children they are currently overseeing. The foster care has been known to serve as an unintended pipeline for crimes against children. The foster care system is one of the greatest intersections with one of the worst crimes, human trafficking. According to the National Foster Youth Institute, 60% of human trafficking victims in the U.S. were involved in foster care system at one time. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Office of the Inspector General, recently estimated that over 2.2 and a half year period, state agencies did not report 51,115 of the 74,353 missing children. Episodes in occurrence with federal requirements. Shall I go on? During my career, I have seen the bright side of foster care families, and I applaud the thousands of capable, self-sacrificing foster parents. We need more of them. However, my eyes have also been open to seeing the dark side and the evil side of the foster care system. Foster care is not always safer than a home from which kids are removed. Children are often trafficked by other foster youth, their own foster parents, even social service caseworkers. Children placed in large group homes when facing inadequate adult supervision and risk, being lured by teen trafficking recruiter recruiters within the home or by traffickers outside the home, promise money and sense of belongings, which these kids normally do not have. Sadly, it is also known that child predators desire to live and work around children. This has created the ugly reality that the Child Protective Service's involvement with human trafficking. It has been said that a strong family is the foundation of a strong and free society. In closing, to maintain this foundation, I strongly encourage local governments, like the ones here in our audience, particularly city councils, board supervisors, and school boards to stand for the constitution that you swore to protect. Don't be a puppet on a string. Be a leader and take a stand for our community. You know the heart of these bills are destructive. Let us unite and stand in the gap together. We must start by using our voices and pass resolutions that stand for parental rights. In closing, I would like to say to Sacramento, stop the nonsense. God be with us. Thank you.
I have a couple, a couple slides that I would like to show. If we could go ahead and put the first one up. All right, so over the weekend, an opportunity to attend the Murieta Temecula Area Alumni Chapter, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., Annual Breakfast and Service Awards. And at that breakfast, you know, our very own supervisor, Washington, received a service award, as did Denise Wilson and Eric Faulkner. And I want to say this was just a wonderful morning. It was the first time I've ever attended this breakfast, and I will definitely be attending next year. I just thought it was a very powerful morning. The keynote speaker was unbelievable. Everyone left motivated and excited. And it's just wonderful to see folks like the three here giving back to their community in a very meaningful way. So that was a wonderful, wonderful morning. All right, and then we do have a, another slide. We have a ready commission meeting coming up. So everyone's invited, September 14th, 2023, 6:00 p.m. right here in Council Chambers, Proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. So we haven't had a presentation, a proclamation in, in a couple months. So we'll be back at it for our ready commission meeting. So I hope everyone can join us for that. And that is all I have. We'll move straight to our consent calendar. And we will go with item number one, waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Two, approve action minutes of August 22, 2023. Item three, approve list of demands. Item four, approve financial statements for the third quarter ended March 31st, 2023. Item five, adopt ordinance number 2023-07. Amending titles 5, 8, and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code and adopt a resolution setting the fee for a tobacco shop permit and find that this ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3. This is our second reading. Item six, approve purchase of software support and maintenance for the Tyler Technologies suite of products for fiscal year 2023-24. Item seven, approve purchase and installation agreement with CDW Government LLC for uninterrupted power supplies at City Hall. Item eight, approve agreement with Riverside County Transportation Commission for the funding of major A regional arterial improvements for Inez Road Improvement Project Phase One from Rancho California Road to Rancho Vista. Yes, you heard that right. That's exciting. Item nine, approve agreement with Riverside County Transportation Commission for funding under Senate Bill 821 Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Program. Ten, approve plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for sidewalks. These are Old Town Improvements, additional streetlights on Moreno Road and Mercedes Street. That's PW 22-17. Eleven, approve plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for park restrooms, renovations, expansion, and Americans with Disabilities Act improvements, PW 17-06. Item 12, approve, approve plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan Implementation Improvements. Ronald Reagan Sports Park, that's PW 18-16. Thirteen, approve specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for citywide concrete repairs fiscal year 2022-23, project PW 23-17. And item 14, accept improvements and file notice of completion for Mary Phillips Senior Center Emergency Generator Enclosure, PW 21-08. And 15, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for the traffic signal installation citywide Rancho California Road at T Drive, PW 19-19. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move to approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Let us vote. Okay, and that passes 3-0. All right, we'll recess city council meeting to the scheduled meeting of the Community Services District.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Temecula Community Services District meeting. Roll call, please.
All, all members are still present with the two noted absences.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Okay. Right now, we have three items under the consent. We have the approve action minutes of August 22nd, 2023, which is number 16. Number 17, approval of fiscal statement for the third quarter ending in March 31st, 31st of 2023. And number 18, approve amendment for, with Shawna Sarnowski. I think I did that right, for photography services. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Oh yeah, there we go. It passes 3 to 0. Any Community Services Director report?
Yes, Madam Vice President, just three items I'd like to bring everyone's attention to. First of all, this weekend, on Friday and Saturday, we will once again be having our Temecula Art Fest featuring Cartoonapalooza. So we encourage everyone to come out and enjoy the art exhibitors, the cosplay contest, and the free chalk zone. Next slide. And then on Saturday, September 23rd, we're extremely happy to be welcoming the 2023 College and Vocational Fair back to an in-person setting at the Promenade Mall. This has been a historically extremely successful event where we welcome over 300 colleges, universities, vocational schools, and military agencies to be in attendance to answer questions, meet with parents, meet with students, and it's just a clearinghouse of information. So strongly encourage anyone with students who might be interested in any of those options to attend. And next slide. Finally, Sunday, September 24th, we'll be having our annual color run. You can sign up online by visiting temeculacaa.gov/register. Look for the Fit Fun Color Run. And the Adult Teen Run will kick off at 8:00 a.m. There's a Family Fun Run at 8:15, and we have a Kids Obstacle Course at 9:45. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Wonderful information. How about a CSD General Manager Report?
Nothing further than that.
Wonderful. CSD Report of Director's Report.
Nothing.
Nothing? All right. Well, adjourned.
All right, and I will call to order the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Madam City Clerk, please note we're all still here. Do we have any public comments? Okay, we'll move to our consent calendar. We have one item. Item 19, approve financial statements for third quarter ended March 31st, 2023. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approval.
Second.
All right, let us vote. Okay, and that passes 3-0. Executive Director, anything?
Nothing further.
Okay, Board of Directors, anything? All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn that meeting, and we will reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, which we have just one item. Items for future city council agendas. Do we have anything before we move to the presentation?
I have one item, and that should be it. Only be three minutes.
Go ahead.
All right. This one I wanted to bring up as a flag policy for our, for our city-owned property. Okay? As a city councilwoman, veteran, and proud American, I am asked the city council to approve and codify a flag policy that would limit the city to only flying flags of, the flags of the United States flag, California, and the City of Temecula flag above the Temecula city property. I've been advised by staff that we do not currently have a flag policy specifically for city property. I was informed by the city attorney and city manager that we currently only have a verbal policy. However, we all know the problems we can run into by not having a written policy directed from this council. Without a flag policy, our cities face various challenges and risks, including but are not limited to a lack, lack of structure, inconsistency in decision-making, and most importantly, potential legal consequences. We ought to remove the burden from our staff members and take it upon ourselves to prevent confusion and conflict in the future. Our residents elected this council to make policies for the city. A city council, as a city councilwoman and a member of the policy subcommittee, it is my duty to bring matters forward where there is no policy written. It is our duty to protect our city and keep us from failing, falling into unnecessary litigation, as the, as did the case of Shirtloff versus Boston. A few months back, our city attorney briefed me on this case where the city had flown flags for 12 years. They raised approximately 50 unique flags for 284 different ceremonies. Most of these were other, were other country flags, but some were associated with groups and causes, a banner honoring emergency medical services and others. In 2017, Hartloff, Harold Shirtloff, the director of the organization called Camp Constitution, asked to hold an event on the plaza to celebrate the civil, the civic and social contributions of the Christian community as part of the ceremony. He wished to raise what he described as the Christian flag. The city denied his petition to fly this flag. He filed a lawsuit that made its way to the Supreme Court, which lasted, which last year unanimously ruled 9 to 0 that the City of Boston violated his freedom of speech. The City of Carlsbad just this year flew a flag for a specific cause with no flag policy in place. Due to their lack of knowledge and the case of the Shirtloff versus Boston, they placed themselves in a situation where they legally would have to allow the flying of 18 different controversial flags or create a flag policy for a city to ban all flags except the U.S. and state flag. As it stands today, the City of Carlsbad has placed itself in a position where they have left themselves vulnerable to a lawsuit. This current policy allows only one specific group to fly a flag and denies all other residents the same right. In closing, let us remember that the United States flag represents all Americans and serves as a reminder to every resident and patriot that we are one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once said by Ronald Reagan, we, we all honor our flag. We honor what we stand for as a nation, freedom, equality, justice, and hope. This flag is a symbol that shall only unite the people of this great nation and hopefully, our city. Shall it never be a divisive tool. In order to protect our city from unnecessary litigation in the future, this policy must be approved and written as soon as possible. Please consider the flag policy as a wise approach to create clarity and specification by creating clear boundaries that are not based solely on a gentleman's handshake. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Calviss, do you have any questions for Councilmember Alexander?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe we can comment or question.
No, this is just a time for yes or no.
There's a brief time where we can ask any question. Yeah. Okay, I just have a couple clarifying questions. Well, maybe a statement and then a question. So, given that we're down a couple councilmembers, I would think it would be in your best interest to sort of put this off until we have five people here. If you're trying to build consensus, if you're trying to, even, even your policy subcommittee member isn't here. Right? So I think that would be my recommendation, is to put it off until you have five people, just as a professional courtesy, right, to your colleagues that aren't here for legitimate reasons. It's not like they're just missing in action. So that's my statement. My question is, and it's something about like, what problem are you trying to fix with the City of Temecula? Because we have a longstanding policy, whether you call it verbal or, or whatever, a handshake, a tradition of flying the American flag, the state of California flag, and the City of Temecula flag here on the property. We do the POWMI flag at another site. So what are you trying to prohibit or fix that's broken in the city?
Okay, no, that's a great question. Thank you, Mayor, for asking. And I don't want to get in the weeds because, City Attorney, if you, if you could stop me at any point in time, I don't know how deep we can get into this discussion because I remember we discussed, we were going to bring it up as a yea or nay, and then the following meeting, we were going to have the discussion and ask questions.
Under the policy that you have for future agenda items, you're just deciding whether or not to put it on the agenda for future discussion. There's no substantive discussion at, at this point in time.
Thank you.
All right, so if you make a motion, make a motion.
Motion.
Second motion to what? Put it on a future council.
Put it on the, the following. Put it on the, the following, yes, to have the discussion.
Second.
Okay, go ahead and vote. All right, and that, that passes two to one, so we'll look for that at another time.
Okay, and then the following one is just going to be a follow-up from what I spoke about before, that I would like to create a resolution for the, with the city, for the, Temecula stands for parental rights, going against the, the bills currently, right now going through the legislation. And also, if, if for some reason they pass at this point, as I spoke to the city manager, I would like to create, if not maybe, an alternate resolution opposing the, the ability for somebody to basically take children out of the home, and basically, we're going to secure our kids. So really, it would be more of a seeking a philosophical resolution. I think we've done that before in the past, so I'd like to move towards something with that.
All right. Again, I think you're running afoul of the spirit of what this is for, but if you guys want to push it through, go ahead. Go ahead and entertain a motion.
Second.
No, I didn't make a motion.
Oh, I'm going to make a motion.
You need to make a motion.
I make the motion.
What, what's your motion?
I would like to create a resolution for parental rights.
And this is just a motion for us to have the discussion?
That's all it is.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, let us vote. All right, two to one, and again, we'll see that at a future meeting. City Managers, report anything quickly this evening before we move to the fun part of the meeting.
No, let's get to the fun part of the meeting.
City Attorney, anything?
Yes, we had a closed session tonight, and there's no actions to report under the Brown Act from that closed session.
All right, appreciate that. Okay. We are here. Welcome, Dr. Ron, appreciate you being here. So we have, much like we did a couple weeks ago, we have many speakers, some videos. I do have one emailed comments that I'm going to have to read, but we'll go ahead and start off with Congressman Calvert. He said he was unable to attend obviously today, but there is a certificate from Congressman Calvert's office on the table. And we'll go ahead and move to Congressman Isa, which we received a video from him.
Hi, and good evening. I am so sorry not to be able to be there tonight. You know, Matt has been a great friend and a wonderful mayor, and he'll be missed. And I would, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that he would have left you two years ago if he hadn't gotten out of the congressional race and stayed doing his job. So as the guy who got the job, I want to thank you twice. Once for being a great mayor, and once for helping me get to Congress. So good luck, and I look forward to working with you in anything else I can do civically or otherwise going in the future. Have a good evening.
All right, that's great. All right, now we have California State Senator Kelly Sartor, he also sent in a video.
So Matt Ron, congratulations on all of the great things that you have done for Temecula, but not just Temecula, the rest of the valley as well. You've always been a very responsible and dedicated voice for the citizens that live here. The, your, your mark is left on a lot of things, especially when it comes to trying to alleviate the congestion on the I-15. Working with you on that committee was a pleasure. I know we butted heads sometimes, but at the same time, you know, today, there's progress being made, and it's, a lot is attributed to your efforts. So it has been an absolute pleasure, being not only a colleague from a neighboring city, but your friend as well. And so I wish you all the best. I know you're going to do great things. I super appreciate your work in the fire industry and, and trying to help firefighters have more healthy environments in which they can work. And so I look forward to seeing what you have to offer in the future, and, and I just want to say, enjoy it. And, and again, thank you. Thank you for, for your efforts, because they have been very fruitful. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Senator. That's wonderful. All right, and now we'll move to California Assemblywoman Marie Waldron, and I believe Corey Uden's here this evening. Welcome.
Well, good evening, councilmembers. My name is Corey Uden, and I'm here on behalf of Assemblymember Marie Waldron, that sends her regrets that she can't be here, but she's quite busy in Sacramento, as the councilwoman alluded to. So I got my Best Hawaiian Shirt on for you, and I came down here to represent, and so I had to sit in that traffic, but as the Senator mentioned, the work you're doing on that will hopefully pay off in the long run. And all the work that you've done in this community, it really shows in just people's passion for their parks and for public safety, the first responders in particular. When disaster hits, we know what to do, and it's in large part thanks to your leadership. I know we could really use it up in Sacramento right now when it comes to people keeping their homes and the insurance issues that we're facing. So please keep up the good work, Dr. Ron, and we do have this very nice assembly resolution that finally made it to your house, so let's get that picture. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Corey. All right, we have California Assemblywoman Kate Sanchez. I believe I see Desiree Farrar in the audience. Welcome, Desiree. Welcome.
I wasn't sure whether we were going to be able to make it here tonight, so I did drop the resolution off, but Matt Ron, Assemblywoman Sanchez is in Sacramento, but would like to just congratulate you on your years of service in Temecula, and we wish you the best in your future endeavors, and hope that you will stay involved in our community. So thank you so much.
Next on my list is Riverside County Third District Supervisor Chuck Washington. Welcome. Hi, how you doing?
Hi, my name is Alex Tean, I'm here on behalf of Third District Supervisor Chuck Washington, and I would like to present you with this proclamation, Dr. Matt Ron, to honor you for your 20-plus years of service and commitment to the residents of the City of Temecula, such as myself, and thank you for your devotion to public service and leadership. So, there you go. Pick it up.
And next up is Riverside County Sheriff's Department Chad Bianco's office, and I believe we have Zach Hall, oh, and Durham coming as well, welcome.
Hello again, just like I never left?
Yeah.
On behalf of Sheriff Bianco, we'd like to thank you for being such a supporter of law enforcement with your time here and time outside here. So a little proclamation from him, that I noticed, it'll fit in any one of those frames, you just turn it sideways.
All right, next up, we have former mayor and city councilmember Jeff Comitcher. Welcome.
You know, Matt, I see two empty seats up there, you want to? No, no, no. Do you miss it?
I'll get to that.
No, you don't have to answer that. I've been in your, I am in your shoes, what am I saying? You know, seriously, when I think about the time that we spent together, what I think about is the collaboration between us. And there were times when we would be here, and somewhere along the way in the meeting, we wound up here, and we did it time and time and time again, with the help of our other colleagues as well. And that's, that's a talent, and you possess that talent, and I always appreciated that. You know, we met during the quarry fight, I love the orange in the back there. Great victory for the city, and we've been friends ever since. So appreciate you, I appreciate what you've done here and the time we had together. It was only four years we had together, and that goes by, you know, like that in this business, but, but it was great. It was a great four years, and who knows what we'll do in the future? You know, let's do something.
Absolutely.
My friend, take care.
All right, next up is a former mayor and councilmember Mike Niggar, he sent in a video.
Matt Ron, I love to talk about Matt Ron. Matt, congratulations. It's my honor to sit here and talk about you and your accomplishments. Throughout Riverside County and throughout California, there are a lot of councilmembers that I call do-nothing councilmembers. However, you were not one of them. I remember when you got elected, something I told you was, to take one or two projects, make them your own, carry the water and carry the ball over the goal line. And you did just that. In your fight for Liberty Quarry, you came to Temecula not knowing any of us, not having really been part of this community, and you participated in a seven-year battle in which we were successful in stopping a heinous quarry from not only impacting our quality of life, but our main industry, which is tourism. And so Matt, at that time, I remember, a seat on the city council came open, and you decided to move your family here, your lovely wife Kelsey, and your lovely daughter Delilah, and you ran for that city council seat, and you deservedly won it. You were serving the city before you were on the city council, and everybody knew it. A couple of other things, Matt, that I'm very proud about you, is that you took a project, Mount San Yuceno College, and refused to take no for an answer. And today, we have the Twin Towers and Mount San Yuceno College serving our young people, serving our adults, and that is a project that you heavy lifted, that's going to serve our community for generations. But there's one other thing that stands out for me, and that was your participation, and again, more heavy lifting, in getting us $50 million from the federal government in order to do the construction on the French Valley Parkway Phase Two, which is now under construction. Your work on that project was instrumental. And keeping in mind, during the Trump administration, giving money to the State of California really had no upside for the administration. But your work and your relationship with Ken Calvert and his work, and of course, our city staff, brought home that bacon. And again, that's going to serve our community for generations. Now let me tell you, Matt, as well, in the six years I've served with you, you sharpened me. Now, there were times that we, I don't like using the word fought, but there were times when we heatedly disagreed, but I don't want anybody to think that we fought. Instead, in those disagreements, we sharpened each other, and we were always, always wanting to do what's best for the city. But you know what is really neat that came out of that? Not only did we sharpen each other, but we became friends, and we became brothers as well. And right now, I consider Matt one of my best friends, and a dear, dear brother. Lastly, I'd like to say, I think I was the main influence in Matt shaving his head. I think he saw the beauty of having a clean pate and decided to go in that direction, again, with my encouragement. Matt, I love you, and I hope you have a fantastic day. And when you drive around this city, know that you were a do-something councilmember. And everybody else in this room, I want you to remember that when you drive down the I-15 freeway and the 215, and you see the construction, or when you see the Twin Towers, or when you look up at Puesca Mountain and see that it's there in all of its splendor, know that Dr. Matt Ron, Mayor Rat, Matt Ron, Councilmember Matt Ron, had a heavy hand in all of it. God bless you all. Take care, Matt.
All right. Is it just me, or was there a tuba in the background or something? I don't know, it sounded like someone was learning tuba. All right, the City of Marietta is also here, I believe Lori Stone is going to speak. Oh, and Mayor DeForest is here as well, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. An honor to be here, on behalf of the entire City of Marietta and four of the five councilmembers here tonight. We would like to award Matt a certificate of recognition for all of your dedication and hard work, not only just in the City of Temecula, but also regionally. And we appreciate your regional outlook. So thank you. And I'd like to read just a little bit of this, because maybe some, some of you don't know all this. Dr. Matt Ron was raised in Nevada, and eventually began his history in Temecula in the early 2000s. Before serving as councilmember, Dr. Matt Ron served as Temecula community in various capacities, such as a consultant, a researcher, educator, and a community advocate, obviously, from what's been set up to this point. So Dr. Matt Ron has also served the Temecula City Council since 2014, and holding the role of mayor twice, 2018 and '22. So on behalf of the City of Marietta, thank you for being who you are and being amazing.
As Mike Niggar alluded, that as you were working for San Diego State, you became a very loud voice in the City of Temecula in fighting in the battle against the Liberty Quarry. And I, I think you came out of your shell at that time. And then in 2014, you contacted me, and you hired me to be your consultant for your original run for Temecula City Council. And I interview all my candidates, and I just don't choose anyone, and I was so impressed by you and Kelsey, and really truly how smart you are, and where your humble roots started from, from a very, very poor upbringing, to the accomplishments that you made today, and you brought that here to the City of Temecula. And I want to share with you some of your original campaign goals. And the first was...
Just the ones I...
Yeah, yeah, there was a lot. First was higher education. That's what you talked about as a campaign goal. And your relationship with MSJC, and acquiring the former Abbott building, and the discussions, and the funding, and the acquisition, you were the lead on that, and look what we have today, as Mike alluded to, the Twin Towers. And that's just not the benefit for the City of Temecula, it's really the benefit of the entire region. And we know statistically what that means when you have higher education, what that means for a region, and that is truly an amazing accomplishment that you made in such a short amount of time. I remember you telling me that it was a fight with Abbott to try and get them to sell that building, so congratulations. And then with regards to public safety, Temecula, I believe, is the 17th safest city in the nation, if I believe. Marietta's the third, by the way. But anyways... But anyways. Yes. You, again, fought for quality of life here in Temecula. You were actively involved in making sure we didn't have cannabis dispensaries and massage parlors. You worked for the DEA to make sure that you had enhanced partnerships with the city and the sheriff's department. You accelerated the Fire Station 95 to help facilitate cost-sharing agreement with the county. Amazing. And then, one of the things that I've learned from you as a fellow colleague is about the wellness for our firefighters. And because of your efforts in a 10-year battle, we finally have a wellness center on the West Coast for mental behavior health and wellness for our firefighters, not only on the West Coast, but here in Riverside County. What an amazing accomplishment that you have strived for, for us here, not just in Temecula, but again, for the region. Your campaign slogan was "committed to our community and dedicated to progress." You don't need a... Yeah, that was actually pretty good. I may have thought of that one, by the way. I might take credit for that. But listen, Matt, I was in the private sector advocating for issues such as homelessness, domestic violence, sexual assault. And I didn't need a title next to my name to accomplish goals. Ironically, 20 years later, I did run, and I have a different format. But I know in the private sector, you're going to make more strides than you would with a title next to your name. So, continue having a voice. Continue for fighting for quality of life for our region. And I want to, God bless you and your wife, and continue to work with me and your fellow colleagues throughout Riverside County, because I know you're going to do great things for us.
Matt, how do you follow that, right? I'm not going to talk about your accomplishments. I'm going to talk about you. You and I have only known each other for a couple of years. I've been around this area for a long time, started getting involved with the City of Marietta in the mid-'90s. And I've met a lot of Temecula council members over the years, many of them, including Supervisor Chuck Washington, Jeff Stone, Jeff Gormont, several. And one thing I've always been oppressed with the majority of Temecula City Council members is their dedication to the community, their passion for doing what's best for the city, not as a political stepping stone, not with your own best interests at heart. And when I first met you, it didn't take me long to realize that you shared those same qualities. And I appreciate you sacrificing, because it is a sacrifice to be on that council. Appreciate you sacrificing for the city of Temecula to make it better. And I thank you for that.
Well, Matt, I just want to say, in my short time in politics, how thankful I was that you came into my life, and you provided great mentorship, and more importantly, great friendship to this day. And I wish you the best in whatever you're going to do. I know you're going to knock it out of the park. And just, I think, by having four of us here in your sister city that you always will have friends and loved ones in Marietta, or as Matt so lovingly calls us, Temecula North.
All right. Thank you, City of Marietta. We have the City of Canyon Lake. I believe our mayor, Jeremy Smith, is here. Welcome, Jeremy.
Marietta gets the attendance award, that's for sure. Just me. Matt, a lot of titles, my friend. We got husband, father, professor, Dr. Ron, mayor, council member tonight. I'm just going to call you Matt. Is that okay? Matt, I'm a little bit nervous, because I have a plaque here. And I was here a couple of weeks ago for Marion Edwards, and she's in the audience. And unfortunately, I only had a folder. Wasn't a nice plaque like this, I guess. We found, I thought it was budget cuts, but now we've upped our ante a little bit. But Matt, I'm here because you've worked hard at bringing, as your formal colleague said, the bacon in regards to transportation on the 15 freeway. So much so, that if anyone knows about Canyon Lake, they know that we are a gated community. We smelt that bacon even past our gates, because we know how much money was brought through this entire area. So, I just want to say thank you from a regional standpoint. Thank you for the good work that you did on all the boards that you served on, the good work that you and staff did with Congressman Ken Calvert to ensure that we have transportation dollars coming to Riverside County. So, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the City of Canyon Lake. And you got a proclamation that is better than most, I think. So, enjoy this.
All right. I see the City of Lake Elsinore has a certificate. Is anyone from Lake Elsinore here? All right. We'll just... Love Lake Elsinore. All right. And I do see former mayor and council member Marion Edwards. I'd love for you to come up and now speak. Welcome.
Dr. Ron, Dr. Ron, and Mom. How proud are you of this gentleman right here? I know you're very proud of him. You know, Matt, it's interesting that somebody would talk about your musical ability and being able to play the violin. It just so happens that I brought a violin from home, hoping that you would play. No, I did not really bring a violin from home. But that is just one of your many, many, many talents. And we've known each other probably longer than anybody because of the reserve. And you even had me meet with the dean. Do you remember that, of San Diego State, which was pretty fun? And we had a great relationship with that university. And you brought us that relationship and the reserve as well. And now, it's actually a part of Temecula. It's been annexed and is part of us, the 5,000 acres. And that's just another one of the many accomplishments that you achieved over the years that you served on the council. You were probably the funniest council member. You know the best stories, and you're very well-traveled, and you have a broad experience in dealing with people at all levels of government and expertise. And along with that came the best stories. So, he's a terrific date, if any of you ever need a lunch date. It's never a dull moment. Yeah, yeah. Exactly. And I still say that you're way too smart for the room. He just knows so much. He brought a whole new dynamic to the city council and area of expertise that we really haven't had before, except through, you know, staff research. But Matt brought that validity of everything environmental. He also brought the expertise in dealing with cow fire. And that was another great asset, because it gave us an added window into what it's like to be a firefighter and a first responder and what the dangers that they face, even in their, you know, the clothing they wear, which doesn't really protect them all that much from the chemicals and all the combustibles and the fumes and everything. So, you are a friend to many groups, organizations, cities, counties, the state of California, and people at the federal level. And so, I am just proud. Tom and I are just proud and happy to call you a great friend. And I'm sorry, I don't get to see you as much. But the next time we do see you, and Kelsey and Mom, you know, we always have a great time together. You know, I'll look forward to some of those funny stories, because I'm way behind now. So, thank you for everything you've done for the city of Temecula. The list is long, and we will never, ever, ever forget what you've done. And this might be, he always enjoyed having his picture taken with me, and you're going to see why.
All right. Next up, we have Western Riverside Council of Governments. They've sent in a video.
Congratulations, Matt.
Matt, congratulations on a distinguished career in public service. The city of Temecula has always been a valuable partner for WRCOG and RCHCA. And we appreciate the role that you've played in that valuable relationship. Best wishes on all of your future endeavors.
Thank you for your service.
All right. Thank you. And we also have a video from Riverside County Transportation Commission and the Western Riverside Regional Conservation Authority.
On behalf of the Riverside County Transportation Commission and Western Riverside Regional Conservation Authority, congratulations and tremendous gratitude to Mayor and Council Member Matt Ron for all of his years of service to both of these regional organizations, which he represented as a member of the Temecula City Council. During his time as an RCTC Commissioner, Mayor Ron was a member of the Executive Committee of RCTC, which sets the general direction of the agency and is one of the leadership bodies here. And we're very, very grateful for the time that he spent to make sure that we were on the right track. And there was no issue more important to Council Member Ron than moving I-15. We know, we heard loud and clear from him and all of the work that he did to organize his colleagues from around the region to make sure that there was a unified regional voice speaking out for all of those citizens of the region who spend their time on I-15, too much time on I-15. And we're very grateful that he created the momentum behind that effort, which resulted in an astounding $50 million for French Valley Parkway, which is under construction today. And we're still working to get future phases of that done in the future. But your tremendous leadership, it was a big part of that, and we're grateful to you for it. Hope that we continue to see around. We appreciate your regional thinking and all the work that you did for transportation and for habitat conservation here in Western Riverside County. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. And we have another video from Riverside County Auditor, Controller, and former Willemar Mayor and Council Member Ben Benoit.
Matt Ron, former mayor Matt Ron of Temecula and council member. It has been a pleasure to work with you over the years. I was always amazed, every opportunity we had to work together and to bring together our two communities, even though we're so drastically different. Us from Willemar having such immense amount of population and so much bigger than your... Oh, wait, wrong city, sorry. No, Matt, we're so happy for you. And congratulations on your tenure there at the city of Temecula. And really, it's been a pleasure to work with you over the years. I can't think of a better person to have worked with over those years. And I really just appreciate our friendship and all the opportunities we had to work together.
All right. Thanks, Ben. Okay. Next up, we have Rancher California Water District. Welcome.
Good evening. I get the honor of presenting the resolution, but we also have our directors here. Director Wilson, Director Gonzalez-Brady, Director Brady, Director Plummer. I'll read the, skip the where-ases and go right to the now-there-for. Be resolved that the Board of Directors of the Rancher California Water District hereby confer upon Matt Ron the highest commendation for his dedication, dedicated service to the city and the community. Three years ago, I had the honor of coming to present to the council for the first time, hearing about the collaboration of our agencies. And that day, I was here saying thank you for what we collectively saved, $3.3 million for the Temecula Parkway project. And I know you had a significant part of that, saying, hey, these are our collective constituents. And for that and your dedication to the community, the support for the collaboration between, I personally want to say thank you. Turn it over to any other. Oh, we're here for the picture.
We do appreciate the honesty. All right. Thank you. All right. Next, we have the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce. Welcome this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members and staff. I'm Kim Keller, Chairman of the Board of the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the chamber, on behalf of nearly 1,000-member businesses and our Board of Directors, as we honor Dr. Matt Ron. With me tonight is the Chamber President and CEO, Brooke Nun, and fellow board member, Adam Eventoff. As mayor in 2018 and 2022, Matt's passion for the protection and well-being of the Temecula community was evident in his dedication to policies that improve the safety of Temecula residents. He was a significant proponent for the advancement of public safety throughout his tenure. And of course, these things are so important to our business community, as well as the education, the traffic abatement, certainly the quarry. Your impact, Matt, has been extraordinary in the number of years that you were here. His zeal for public safety was reflected in his theme of Temecula Safe during his State of the City Addresses, twice, in fact. So, I remember those red bags that we all got. It was like, we're still, that still really helped me a lot, get organized on that. So, as a highly respected member of our community, Matt's always exhibited the attributes of a great public servant. He was fair, transparent, and accessible to everyone. He served the community with honesty, integrity, balance, and equity. I have personally appreciated his very obvious intelligence and the thoughtfulness that Matt always brought to the dais.
Okay. On behalf of the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, we are excited to see that Matt remains active in the community. His current membership with the Temecula Rotary Club, as well as joining the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, attests to his continued dedication to the advancement of Temecula as a whole. We are particularly impressed with his role as Executive Director of the Wildlife Conservancy, a California nonprofit research foundation dedicated to serving our firefighters and protecting our communities. That's a plug for our newest chamber member. We recognize and celebrate Matt for his remarkable service to the city of Temecula. As we celebrate you today, Matt, we would like to express our profound gratitude and appreciation for your passionate leadership and support of the business community. We look forward to a continued relationship where our efforts converge towards making this a great community, even better place to live and thrive.
Dr. Ron, come up, please. We have a little something for you in recognition of your outstanding leadership for Temecula. So, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Okay. And next up, we have Visit Temecula Valley. Welcome.
So, Matt, on behalf of the vibrant $1 billion tourism industry that you've supported so much over the years, I'm just going to say a few words. This is the Cliff Notes version of what everybody else is saying. Matt Ron is a really, really smart guy. Matt Ron genuinely cares about helping other people. And Matt Ron, you actually do something about it on a regular basis. So, on behalf of tourism and as a citizen of this area, we just want to say thank you. Come and get your certificate of recognition from Visit Temecula Valley. But more importantly, I want you and Kelsey to know, you get a lot of these certificates. There's a bottle of excellent Temecula wine waiting for you at John and Kim's house. You come out there, and you're going to get something a lot better than this certificate.
Maybe it goes the same way with the wine, huh? All right, California State University San Marcos is here as well, welcome.
Hello, good evening. As I said before, I really appreciate the opportunity to be part of this. And so thank you to the council for inviting Cal States and Marcos. And thank you, Matt. You know, I've only known you a very short time. You were really good to me in the very short time that I've known you, welcomed me to Temecula. And your passion for education that many people have talked about, you know, that has been very, very good to Cal States and Marcos. And, you know, Matt has done something which I'm not sure that a lot of people in the room know. So I'm going to take a little time to just explain this to you. So in 2015, Matt brought to Cal States and Marcos the idea of developing a Bachelor of Science in Wildfire Science. And then he went out and did all of the research on, for this program. He then went out and put together all of the collaboration with CAL FIRE, CAL FIRE Local 281, National Institutes of Standards and Technology, International Association of Firefighters, US Department of Agriculture, and US Forest Service. He brought all those agencies together to develop this program. And then in 2016, he did the work of putting the program together. And in 2018, we launched a Bachelor of Science in Wildfire Science and Urban Interface. And I want to emphasize the urban interface because that's a term you hear thrown around now all the time about the urban interface. Because that is a particularly very important component of how you worry about wildfire because our cities and our wildlands are getting so close. So we really do truly appreciate Matt at Cal State and Marcos for his contribution, for his dedication to the students and this program. He actually also went out and found scholarship money. So a lot of the students who have done this program have gone through the program with the money that Matt brought to the table so that they could get their education paid for. So quite a remarkable accomplishment. And I want to personally thank you for how good you have been to me in the very short time that I've known you. And I hope that we can continue this collaboration. Thank you very much, sir. I truly appreciate it. So we have, you know, I don't have a fancy certificate. You know, we're universities, we don't do that sort of thing. But we, the university has this, this very fancy thing, this challenge coin. And this is presented to our first-year students, their parents, and the president presented to first-year students as a challenge to them to accomplish what they came to Cal States and Marcos to accomplish. And so to you, for the next phase of life, this is a challenge to you to accomplish as great or greater than you have already accomplished in the next phase of life. So thank you very much.
I'm, I'm just going to say real quick that, you know, it's, I'll, I'll mention San Marcos in my speech, but since this is recorded, I'm going to use this as my employment evaluation for the year as well. So I appreciate you saying nice things, Sam, thank you.
Check that box. All right, we also have Mount Santa Sento College, Dr. Roger Schultz sent in a video.
Mayor Matt Ron, I can remember the day I met you at an MTG meeting at Wilson Creek. I can't believe it has been about 10 years when you were running. But you know what, little did I know then that we would become such good friends and you would be such a huge supporter of Mount Santa Sento College's quest to have a campus in Temecula. You played an instrumental role with your vision and your fellow colleagues on the council to help us achieve that dream of really putting a milestone in Temecula with higher education. And I know you've tried to champion for us to get CSU into our building as well. We're working on that, we'll continue that with you. But Matt, you have changed the course of history for countless students because of your efforts and work. And you are a great council member. I salute you and your colleagues for the great place that you have created and making Temecula just such a great place to work and live and just enjoy life. I wish you well in your next chapter, but I know we're going to see you around. Take care.
And next up, we have the Old Town Temecula Association and Julie, no, oh, it's Ross Jackson. Welcome, Ross.
Twice in the month. On behalf of the Old Town Merchants Association, I would like to thank, we would like to thank Mayor Matt Ron for the outstanding commitment, the leadership, stewardship, and the love of our town. Old Town Temecula is forever grateful for your service. And on a personal note, let's go riding.
All right, next up, we have Michelle's Place Cancer Resources Center, Kim Garish, welcome.
Well, I don't have anything fancy for you to hang up, but I've just been to his new office, so you need all of these things because your walls are empty, so that's good to know. I just want to say thank you as a resident of Temecula. Thank you for making our world a better place and a better place for my family. But from the nonprofits in our community, thank you for listening, for actively trying to make it better and to give us the resources we need to do what we need to do. I truly appreciate that from Michelle's Place and for all the cancer patients that we work with. And I know you're still trying to work with us. It wasn't just because it's your job, so thank you so much from the bottom of my heart.
Okay, next up, we have Save Our Southwest Hills, joining us this evening, welcome. Good evening.
Well, I think we all know that Matt Ron is a man with a plethora of talents. But I believe one of his most outstanding traits is his ability to speak. And by that, I mean holding an audience spellbound. Whether it's a group of three or 30, he demonstrates the same intensity, the same passion. He ultimately convinces. Thank you, Matt.
So I just wanted to say a few things to you, Matt. My first memory of you was at the scoping session at Temecu Hills. I don't remember what years it was, what year it was. That was when my family first learned about Granite Construction's bid to put a massive quarry in the hills behind our house. Of all the people that spoke during that eight-hour meeting, you were the person who stood out the most. You were, as we've come to know, your usual articulate and intelligent self. And after the meeting, we were all asking, who was that guy? He just amazed all of us. Over the next seven years, it was fun to work with you on the tours of the Santa Margarita Reserve and the SOS Hills events. Then you and Kelsey moved to Temecula and embedded yourself in the community. And you ran for city council. Everyone knows you're a fire and safety guy, but not, you're not as well-known about your support of the arts and in particular, music. You served on the Temecula Valley Symphony and the Temecula Valley Conservatory of the Arts and helped those organizations grow. And the thing I miss about that is the stories, as Mary Ann said. Those are our favorite parts. I truly appreciate, appreciate the fact that your door's always been open to me and I look forward to seeing where you will land in the next few years. Thank you, Matt.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, we have Fred and Linda Barts. Are they here? I thought I saw them earlier, but we'll come back if they're stepped out for a second. We have the City of Temecula Planning Commission this evening. I'd like to invite the City of Temecula Planning Commission up. And Adam, I know you're also going to speak on behalf of SRCR as well, so.
Okay, maybe you should come up. It's a little weird on the neck. Yeah, so we came in at the same time. I came in on planning commission and you on city council. And so I feel like we worked a long time together, it was great. And I think one of the things I remember, actually, I think when you were running the second time, second time, yeah, the second time, is getting signatures, which I became familiar with. And you went into, I got my neighbors, and you went into my neighbor's home. And they were just so impressed with that, to have the, you know, to have somebody who had been mayor that was running to be sitting in their home and answering questions. And I think that's one of your greatest strengths is, when you were mayor and also city council members, listening to people. And have, I went to several of those meetings when you had the community outreach, coffee with the mayor. And I thought they were really excellent. And I think you listened. And I think that people recognized that. And I think that was a great quality you had on the council, too, listening to your colleagues. And I think that's really important. We can have our own passion. But I think we always need to listen to others. And I think that you did a very great job of that, and we miss you. There are some MTGs up here. Anyway, we miss you. And as a planning commission, we appreciated you. So I'm speaking for myself, but also for my colleagues that are here tonight. And thank you for your service to the city. I know it's not easy, so thank you, appreciate it.
And then Adam, if you'd like to come up for, on behalf of SRCR, if you'd like.
I'll tell you, if you stay here, it's a little easier than talking back. So appreciate the opportunity, you know, wear multiple hats, but I'm going to put on the Realtor hat first, then I'll get into some personal stuff later. Clearly, you're short of wall art, so we've got a certificate of appreciation here for you as well on behalf of the Association of Realtors. And in that capacity, and we've heard it all night long, it's kind of one of the challenges of being later toward the presentations as some of the words have already been taken. But clearly, your passion for public safety, fiscal responsibility, and economic growth has really developed our city into something that, as Realtors, we are proud to get out and sell. And that's made our job a lot easier. Secondly, you've always listened. You've always listened to us whenever there's a concern. If you've wanted more information, which is not very often that you need more information, but you have sometimes seeked that information from us and you listen to us. And for that, on behalf of the Realtors, we really do appreciate that. On a personal note, you've become a friend of mine over the years, really a mentor in certain capacities. My continued service here to the city of Temecula is large in part because of you. And I appreciate that and all the wisdom that you've shared with me, always willing to meet up and talk. I know we're recognizing you tonight, but I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Kelsey for sharing you with us. So thank you very much for that. And all this stuff feels like it's goodbye, but it's not. I'm going to see you every week at Rotary now, so we're good to go. So I really just want to say thank you so much for your dedication. You know, you really are a role model, it's going to, it's someone to look up to. And everything that you've done, you should be very proud and we appreciate it. Thank you. And before I turn around, you're not going to see double, this is me and Matt.
I could throw Roger Schultz in there. Thank you. All right, next, we have a video received from Riverside County Fire Chief Weiser.
Mayor Ron, it's Bill Weiser, the Fire Chief here at Riverside County Fire Department and the CAL FIRE Riverside Unit Chief. Matt, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for all the support you've always shown for public safety and especially fire. I know you've really been working hard in your career and helping us with safety upgrades as well as our own health. Matt, you've just been terrific in your service to the community and helping all of us doing the very best that we can. Matt, I look forward to keep seeing you around. I know we're going to do stuff in the future.
How do you get one of those helicopters? That was really cool.
Matt has one.
Yeah. All right, next, we have City of Temecula Fire Chief John Crater.
Yeah, what do I say about Matt? A lot. I've been here three years, Matt was here, you know, two and a half of those. But truly an inspiration for me in my career. And even at city council meetings, the coaching and the mentorship that you gave me personally helped me in my fire career. So truly a blessing. And your priority was always Temecula safe. And at the State of the Cities, you made sure that people knew what the priority was. Your first responders here in the city of Temecula. And by keeping us safe, the four-person staffing, you continue to push that, we appreciate it. It keeps us safe on structured fires, it gives us this better accountability. Our losses are down, our rescues are up. Our ISO rating is a two. The first city in Riverside County that is contracted with CAL FIRE Riverside to achieve that. That's an accomplishment that not many could say, and top 7% in the United States for fire departments. Your field reduction plans, to put a ring around the city, work on the creeks, protect the citizens, help with insurance rates, and better understand wildfires. You're a true servant to the state of California. We appreciate your efforts. The best fire equipment, cancer research, washing machines that extract soot and ash, going out on fires and testing inside the cabs of our fire engines to see what we're breathing, to better understand cancer and how it impacts the fire service nationwide. And then something near and dear to me, mental health in the fire service and behavioral health. And coming alongside us as a fire department and making it a priority here in Temecula that our firefighters had funding set aside to add on that extra layer of what doesn't get picked up by insurance. Making sure that we go home to our families. And that we have a family to go home to. So I definitely appreciate everything you've done. I'm proud to call you a friend. And I'll see you out in the field. Thank you, Matt.
All right, well, that's the balance of the comments from everyone in the audience. I did receive an emailed in comment from a former council member, Mayor, State Senator Jeff Stone, so I'd like to read that now. It says, Dear Mayor, Councilmembers, Staff and Former Constituents, I'm honored to send my greetings and gratitude to Mayor, once a mayor, always a mayor, Matt Ron, and his many years of valued service to the City of Temecula and the County of Riverside, where Matt also served on many important county commissions. I've worked with Matt for many years and I've always been impressed with his high education, altruism, problem-solving skills, dedication and his incredible effective leadership. Many of us, including me, love Temecula and what it's become, which did not just happen by chance. Matt's priorities of investing in and pursuing strong public safety services, balancing the budget with strong reserves, strong investments in infrastructure and the preservation of open space in parks has enhanced the quality of life of every Temeculan. It's because the citizens of Temecula have always and carefully elected true leaders, true statesmen and stateswomen like Matt has ensured that every citizen of Temecula can have the highest quality of life possible. Mayor Matt Ron's successful tenure can be seen from one side of the city to the other. I ask that all the citizens of Temecula and surrounding areas, please join me in congratulating Matt Ron for his personal sacrifice and tremendous public service to all. Jeff Stone. All right, with that, I'll turn it over to our City of Temecula City Manager, Aaron Adams.
Mayor Ron, I think it's only fitting that you've come to the podium. This is fun, right? Dr. Ron, you remember what council days are like and I've been running pretty hard today. So, I was thinking about writing my comments in my speech through ChatGPT, but I realized he's a professor. He would pick that up right away, right? So, no, Matt, I did actually prepare some comments I'm going to read. On behalf of the entire workforce, Matt Ron, I wanted to acknowledge you faithfully served two terms on the city council, twice being tapped as Temecula's mayor. For your commitment to our city's quality of life, I say thank you. When I think over those eight years, I do have some observations that I believe reflect the Matt Ron I came to know. Prior to getting elected to the city council, we as the city staff only really saw you as the San Diego State University scientist who worked tirelessly on fighting the quarry mine and battling for years alongside our partners at Pachanga. Once elected, I found you to be kind of a staffer at heart, someone who had worked under administrations in academia, and you seemed to have an appreciation for the city workers and work ethic and dedication observed by your city staff. In those eight years on the council, I observed time after time situations that you believed could be resolved by compromise, whether it was in a public hearing or via email or in person in your private office. Your famous line was always, "Let's just sit down and have a cup of coffee." I do not know how many times I heard this, but I started to believe you were a stockholder in Starbucks. While it was true that many things did require compromise, it did require others to give. And sometimes that just was not going to happen. Yet it never deterred you and admittedly, sometimes I saw the situation as hopeless and told you so, only to find out you still wanted to have that cup of coffee. Everyone knows Matt is a smart guy. He has like alphabet soup of initials behind his name, BS, BA, MA, JD, certified this, and I would like to add two more letters, VI, as Vanilla Ice tribute. More to that later on. Matt, everyone puts police and fire at the top of their list. However, you made public safety and public safety investments your priority for our city. You championed numerous causes, you supported programs, you enhanced staffing that we continue to enjoy today with our partners at Riverside County Fire, Cal Fire and our partners at RSO. In 2015 and 2016, you and Councilmember Comacherro volunteered your time to roll up your sleeves and immerse yourselves into the long-term fiscal concerns of public safety funding. This ultimately led to a voter-approved add-on sales tax, Measure S, that became the single biggest change to ever occur in the city's history. This transaction use tax allowed us to maintain the 4-0 staffing that you heard about tonight on all of our fire engines. It allowed us to open and staff a brand-new fire station, 95, at Saumers Bend. It added, we added countless deputies to law enforcement ranks. We opened a police station at the Civic Center. We've created special law enforcement teams. This represents just a snapshot of the public safety investment every year thereafter and does not account for the community services and the transportation and the capital projects that are included in our CIP budget. Matt, in my humble opinion, your leadership during those two years and the outcome is your greatest legacy. You left the City of Temecula. A very close second to this legacy work will be your efforts as we pursued a $50 million grant by the federal government for French Valley Parkway Phase Two. Traveling to DC, you remember, selling the merits of our project and dire need to our congressional representatives was absolutely necessary and paramount to our ultimate success in closing this funding gap. Matt, I've enjoyed working with you as I feel like I also saw your public servant heart to help other people, those in need and those that may not have advocacy in our community. On the special needs side of the house, to the aging adults in our community, to your desire to see a seven-member inclusive ready commission established, your heart was on display for the betterment of humanity. These were not easy nor comfortable decisions and conversations, but you believed they were right for our community during those times. See, Matt and I also share a birthday, December 7th, Pearl Harbor, and a few years ago, I realized I was a couple of years older than him. But certainly, we grew up in a similar era of music and genres. And I think the statute of limitations has expired and I can share the following story. Once upon a time, I was with Mayor Ron at an event and open karaoke was occurring. I watched then Mayor Ron fill out his desired song and when it was his time amongst like 300 to 400 individuals, many of whom we knew, he bravely took the stage and in perfect unison began rapping "Ice, Ice, Baby" by 90s hit artist Vanilla Ice. My heart sunk. Was I going to lose my job? Was this my responsibility? I can't control him. These were the things that were going through my head. But you know what? The crowd loved him. They roared, they sang along, he hit it out of the park. And at one point, he actually changed the lyrics to call me out by name in the rap. It was a surreal moment. Unbelievable, classic memory I will remember for the rest of my life. Thank you, Matt Vanilla Ice, for supporting me, my team for those eight years. We got a lot accomplished and the good work in the city continues today. All the best to you and Kelsey in this next chapter of your life. God bless you. Thank you for all your support. Mr. Mayor, I have one other brief statement and I think we have a photo I'd like to throw up there. Jonathan, if we have it. Other photo. Councilmember Brown. If you have it. Well, Matt, I recently spoke to Councilmember Brown, who's obviously absent tonight, who authorized the following statement. Regrettably, I'm not in attendance this evening as I have transitioned from my Cal Fire career to a position with FEMA, currently on assignment in Maui assisting with the recovery effort. Being here, I'm reminded of the devastation and bravery associated with another event which was marked yesterday, 9/11, where the tragedy was only rivaled by the bravery of the first responders. A long way of saying that I regret not being there in person to mark this celebratory occasion. However, I wanted to extend my profound thanks and appreciation for your exceptional years of service and commitment to public safety and why Temecula Safe is more than just an expression, but a foundational element to our high quality of life. Congratulations, Matt. And that's on behalf of Councilmember Curtis Brown. So, thank you.
All right, now we'll have City of Temecula City Attorney, Peter Thorson.
Matt, I spent a lot of time in meetings with you over the years, probably a good percentage of my life, to be honest with you. But one of the things that I enjoyed more than anything else is when those meetings went off course and you and Randy Joel and I started debating legal philosophy. That was really great. I enjoyed that. Probably the only three of us in the world that would, but it was still really good. So, all the best to you and thank you very much.
And we'll move to City of Temecula City Council and Councilmember Calphus.
Well, Mayor Ron, I never had the pleasure of working with you, but the words here tonight paint the picture of what an amazing person you are and I wish I had the opportunity to work alongside you. You're a staunch advocate for public safety, our firefighters, our sheriff deputies here in town. I hear constantly how you met with our local workforce and worked towards affordable housing and attainable homeownership. I know you were a big supporter of many nonprofits in the city. The foundation that you have laid for future city council members, including myself, cannot be understated and your legacy will be remembered throughout these halls for the years to come. So, thank you for everything you've done and continue to do for our city.
All right, Councilmember Alexander.
Well, I just want to say thank you for your contributions to everybody in the city and I know we all are saying the same. We've had our times here, we've had good times, we've had rough times, but they've always panned out. And so, I just want to thank you so much from myself, from my family, for doing what you've done for our community. And I think you were the only council member I've ever met with a coffee machine in his office, always the best coffee too. So, I just thank you for always inviting me in there to have conversations and I just wish you the best on your next adventure. God bless.
All right. Matt, I'm going to come down there and say my words to you down there and we have a couple of other items we want to present to you, so at that time I'll go ahead and call my colleagues down and we'll present those. We'll be right down.
Outside of Vanilla Ice, this is the second most awkward evening I've ever had.
Well, before I jump into my words, Councilor Mayor Protem Stewart sent us in a video, so let's go ahead and watch that.
Hey, Matt, I really would have liked to have been there, but I had my 45th high school reunion this week and so I am on the other side of the country. Wish you the best of luck and I know you're having a ball. I've seen some of the stuff you're doing, so good job and I wish you the best.
All right, thank you, Stu.
So, Matt. I was going to say something nice about IT, but.
Well, sorry about that. So, Matt, you know, it's again an honor as mayor to serve in this role, to honor you tonight. You know, you and I spent four years together on council and much like I shared a couple weeks ago with Councilmember, former Councilmember Edwards, it wasn't the easiest four years, you know? But we made it through it and for me, as a junior council member coming in, I had always looked up to you and what you had done prior to being here as a council member with the quarry and then being on council and seeing your leadership style. But then being able to participate in that with you on subcommittees and closed sessions and sitting up on the dais together, I really understood. And again, I don't think it's, the general public doesn't understand what we do. So, Kelsey, thank you for putting up with it because it's a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of work. But you could go down the list of what everyone was talking about this evening, whether it's police and fire. I wore my Temecula Safe pin, everyone, in honor of you because I think that's important and I love how you focused on that. But just your leadership in here was something that I genuinely appreciated and try to model now and try to think, you know, how would you do it and, you know, what can I glean from the time we spent together to sort of take that moving forward. And much like other folks have said, you drive around the city and you see things that you've had your imprint on, most notably, you know, Mount San Jacinto, like that's an amazing campus in the heart of our city. And then, you know, shovels in the ground on I-15, which is a huge deal. So, you've made a huge mark on our community and I know you will continue to do so. So, this is awkward in a sense that, you know, this isn't goodbye for sure. This is next chapter stuff for you. And I just genuinely appreciated some of the time we spent together away from the city. And, you know, you do light up a stage and wax a chump like a candle with the best of him. So, I hope we can share some of those moments in the future and I think we will. So, Matt Ron, I appreciate you.
You know, I appreciate, appreciate all the kind words and recognitions. It makes my job a lot easier here because I don't have to say a lot of the same things. But before I get started, I wanted to mention, I came up to Peter and Randy at the beginning of the meeting because I was honestly a little worried. You know, I hold the record for having the shortest council meeting in the city's history of sub-12 minutes. I looked it up online, sub-12 minutes. And so, I was concerned coming here that, looking at the agenda, this not being part of the regular meeting, that would be broken. So, I actually grabbed speaker slips and I had my mom and Kelsey here to provide, you know, a total of nine minutes between us just in case. I want you to know that I will always be here to provide that additional nine minutes because as long as I'm here, I think that record is going to stand. But, you know, in all seriousness, what brought me to Temecula, what brought me to this community was just the love that you all had shown during some of the more interesting times that this community faced. And it started, you know, very early on. I don't know if you know this, but I was actually here a lot earlier than the Liberty Quarry, working on consulting projects for transportation, energy projects and so forth. And I would mostly just drive through town going on my way to various locations. And it was then I just kind of realized there's something different about this town. When I had the opportunity to come here and spend tremendous part of my life working on Liberty Quarry issue, I got to know some of you and I obviously had hair back then. But, you know, it was seven and a half years of watching this community grow and advocate together and be a community together on something that they all found important and consequential. And it was during that process that Kelsey and that Kelsey and I decided to move here because it was a community like no other. I also was happy to work with a lot of you over the years in other capacities. We ran, you know, what was known as the Environmental Leadership Academy with San Marcos for many years. And I think pretty much all of the planning staff at one point had gone through the academy. So we had, you know, these built-in relationships that really helped me understand staff, really helped me understand the city. And then, you know, even in our own lives, post-Liberty Quarry, I never thought that city council was in the cards for me. But, you know, our good former council member, Ron Roberts, and mayor had made that encouragement and saw that, you know, he would like to see that legacy continue. And he thought I could serve an important role. And I remember telling him no. And then realizing the importance of what that role really is and, you know, how I could help carry on what Temecula has been so well-known for. I will brag a little bit about my wife here and say that, you know, post-Liberty Quarry, she was then hired by Pachanga to serve as the environmental director ultimately and served many solid years. It created a unique problem for me, having to recuse myself on all issues related to the tribe. But, you know, her outstanding advocacy for, you know, what was important and sound for the tribe has really helped them along their journey as well. And I'm proud to say that she also served on the museum board at one point as well. Just received her PhD or, I'm sorry, DRPA, Doctorate of Public Health from UNC. And I do that not just to embarrass her, but because I think, you know, today she works with us on the same programs with research and education. And it's a remarkable thing to, you know, be able to live and work with the same person and accomplish what we are. And I think, you know, over the many years that we've lived here, serving on the city council, participating in the city in a way that most people don't ever get to, it also takes its toll. It is challenging. I sympathize with you all. I know how much effort goes into it. I know how many hours are spent. And I know how many missed events with your family and your children you experience. And I know, I know how deeply frustrating that can be because you can't be everywhere and you can't be everything for everybody. So I give anybody who goes through this process credit for putting in that time and that effort and that dedication for that, you know, whopping $600 a month because it's something very special. I loved this town so much that I even helped my mom move here. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank her as well because I think a lot of what we do in our lives comes from our background, comes from our upbringing, the struggles that we saw, the hard work that she put in. You know, she always said that education was important. And she said, "I just want you to do one better than me. I want you to get that bachelor's degree. I want you to do that." And I, a little bit more than that. But it was, it was that effort, that guidance and that support and showing how she was able to bring us out of low-income housing in a difficult time in our lives, buy a home, become a registered nurse and provide for her family. That inspired me for, you know, the rest of my life. It was the greatest honor to serve this city. I really will say that. And it's funny because the accomplishments, the successes, the things we did, you know, I'm standing here because of all of you. Right? It's important to have remarkable staff and remarkable folks to work with because I've got this list of stuff that I was going to talk about that are just, you know, some of the biggest honors of my life to have helped shepherded. But fortunately, a lot of folks mentioned a lot of them. And so, but, but I'll say, you know, first thing we did together, Randy, was work on a legislative platform and a political advocacy program for the state and federal government. And I think that's paying dividends today, clearly, that relationship. When we first started going to Sacramento, and at the time I was spending a lot of time in DC, which was for other work, but coincidentally always happened to align with some issue for Temecula to the point where they thought we had a private jet or something because it was like, anytime something happened, it was like, I would just show up in people's offices. But, you know, it was, it was that effort that went into that, that platform, where when I started doing it, we almost had this sort of moment in people's offices where it was like, Temecula, who? They know us now. They recognize us. They recognize the leadership. They recognize the hard work that goes into, you know, as a city of 100,000 people, taking over a monumental highway construction project on a federal highway as a city, you know, moving in that direction. That's phenomenal. And nobody questioned it. I mean, I'm sure they did. But, you know, but, you know, but, but it happened. And so, you know, I'm proud of the advocacy, the senior master plan that we wrote. You know, we advocated when I was on the RCHCA and I said, "It's time we start to downlist or delist the Stevens kangaroo rat. Haven't we done enough?" And we made the first trip to Washington DC. And again, you know, it ultimately, it paid off. Solar projects, we just cut a ribbon on that a little while ago, saving the city millions of dollars in utilities. We, you know, one of the weirdest things on my resume is the first chairman for the Bureau of Cannabis Control for the state of California. That was a weird one. But it was about public safety and local control. That's why I did it. And we were the only city represented in a 22-member panel for the state of California. And our advocacy led to the first major lawsuit against, and all my testimony was Exhibit A. It was awesome, right? I mean, we really, we, and people were just like, "What is Temecula?", right? We did some cool stuff. Highway transportation, of course, you know, expanded inspection programs, dealing with cannabis ordinances, massage parlor ordinances, illicit activity that we know in this community erode the fabric of our town. We did some really amazing stuff. I will say also, the Ready Commission. I think that was an amazing accomplishment at a time that was probably one of the most challenging in our city's history. These last several years, and with the guidance of folks like Mary Ann, serving as mayor. Serving as mayor during those times, some of the most tumultuous times in our lifetimes. And we were able to, what? Recognize our community, deal with, you know, major economic uncertainty, never touching our fiscal reserves. I mean, you know, it was just, you know, that just doesn't happen by accident. Things can be accomplished when we work together. I love the fact that everybody knows I had a coffee machine in my office. And, and I always would say, "If we could just sit down and have a cup of coffee..." It wasn't the caffeine that I was interested in, although it helps. But it was the relationship building, right? It was that opportunity to hold something warm in your hand, look across the table to somebody who you may be at odds with and try and find some sort of common ground. And that, to me, was so important, to break down those barriers, even when I know you guys would all tell me, "It's like, this is a waste of time." And we did it anyway because I couldn't live knowing that if we had put in the effort, even if it is a failure, if I didn't do it, I couldn't live with myself knowing I didn't put in the effort and at least try, you know? And that, to me, was sort of the essence of what we were supposed to do as a city council. You know, compassion and humanity, protecting the city's integrity, protecting its identity, protecting who we are, but never forgetting our humanity, our relationships, being able to see each other as human beings, being able to talk to each other and being able to actively listen, right? And that's, you know, look, it's a difficult time in the country right now. It's a difficult time in the city. I get it. But if we can find that balance again, if we can start working toward understanding, respecting each other, I think, you know, Temecula's going to do some amazing stuff still. You know, and I have full confidence that it will. When we stop seeing each other as people, as neighbors, as friends, as colleagues, it's easy for us to build up barriers, to stop listening, to impose our beliefs or our agendas or our whatever on each other. And it's not a right and a wrong, right? The people who get to write the history books are the ones who win. But along that pathway, everybody has a perspective. Everybody has something to say. And let's try and figure out those common items. You know, I just spent, and I sent these two guys, Kevin and Aaron, a message a little while ago, spent a little bit of time traveling most of the state on a fire-related project. And I got to see communities, and I won't name names because we'll be at the League of Cities meeting here in a week. But I got to see communities that are deeply struggling with homelessness, with addiction, with suicide, with local economies that are failing and businesses that are shuttered, you know, crumbling infrastructure and questionable public safety. And then we drove back into Temecula and the streets are paved. There's a couple of cracks. I'm sorry, Pat. But, you know, I'll send you an email on. But, but the streets are paved. It's a beautiful community. It's not littered with graffiti. You know, yes, we have homelessness. Yes, we have drug addiction. Yes, we have, you know, issues in the community. But we're fighting to keep those, you know, and come up with good solutions to these problems. And so when I crossed back into Temecula, I saw all of that and I was just amazed. I was like, "That's why we're here, right there. This is different." California, in a lot of respects, has lost its luster around a lot of its communities, but not Temecula. You know, Temecula has been able to keep that luster, to keep that pride and to show the rest of our region and our state and even our nation that we take pride in our civic responsibilities. You know, and we're always going to keep our communities safe. And we're always going to make sure we maintain our infrastructures and our parks and our community service programs and our budgets. I mean, these are all important components. But when we disagree with each other, respect the vote, right? I can't emphasize that enough. Man, I don't know. I've lost. You know, Jeff was here earlier, Comacher, and we were just talking about how, you know, we came off on the wrong side of issues sometimes. There were beautiful moments when we came together and found consensus and figured out how to move an item forward where everybody was okay, right? That doesn't always happen. And when it doesn't, it's okay. That's the beauty of this process, right? When we disagree with each other, win or lose, that's the process. That's what we've all agreed to be a part of. And when we stop respecting that process, that's when the communication breaks down, right? And I love to see this work. I mean, we all represent an aspect of this community that we all understand and we all try and bring forward those perspectives. You know, and I know I'm preaching to the choir. I know I'm saying things that you've all heard before. And I've said at the dais, you know, a thousand different times. But I'm going to say it again here tonight because, you know, I only have three minutes from now on. The, I wanted to mention the other organizations. Everybody who came up here tonight that we had a relationship with, WRCOG, RCTC, RCA, all of these, you know, acronyms and, you know, abbreviations. It's because of them that the city is also successful. Take that time. Do your homework. Be involved. Work with these folks because they fill a very vital role in our region. And we have to be at the table. We have to be there fighting for what's important to Temecula and be that good representative. But also, there's all these other, you know, we had, you know, our utility partners and our waste companies and, you know, all of these other folks that we work with over the years, our legislators, even our consultants, even our developers. You know, we've all developed relationships with these folks to help work together to solve problems. And again, you'll see that in even a, even a simple development project. When that communication breaks down, when the barriers go up, we can't move forward, you know? And it becomes, you know, we've seen that on Altair. We've seen it on other projects. And I always was trying to, you know, like, let's break down, let's get a cup of coffee, right? Let's figure this out because I know we can. I will also emphasize the importance of the City of Marietta. They are great partners and advocates. And I'll tell you, when I first got on the city council, it was not like that. There was a lot of animosity between the members. And there was a lot of pushback on even getting roads connected between the two communities. There was pushback when we got them all. There was pushback when we advocated for MSJC. There was pushback on a lot of things. But, you know, together, we're stronger. They do things that we don't do. We do things that they don't do. But collectively, between a couple hundred thousand people, it's a remarkable partnership, you know? And we have to continue fostering that relationship. This, for me, was a relationship. It was a lasting friendship. I don't just share, you know, a common birthday with you, Aaron. I share a lot more than that. And, and the friendships that were created while we were here, the people that we know and care about, this is, this is what made it worthwhile. Our commissioners, wonderful people. You know, I remember advocating in my first year or so to make commission appointments a public process, to no longer do it by subcommittee and to have those commissioners stand here in front of the dais and actually advocate for why they should be on that commission. And everybody on the city council said, "Absolutely not", you know? But I was always about that open, transparent government. Let's hash it out in public. Let's have the conversation. What kind of commissioner? If you can't stand up here as a commissioner and advocate for yourself being the best representative possible, then maybe you're not a commissioner. That's okay. There's plenty of other roles you can serve. But, you know, the outcome of that was, I remember that first year, 80-some-odd applications that we had. And we continue to exceed. I mean, when we started this years ago, it was just like a handful of people would apply. And now the community is there and the bench of talent, passionate, dedicated people is so obvious now, right? We get to see that every time you all go through this very public process of appointing commissioners. I'm going to talk personally about a few of you. And if I left anybody out, I apologize because I'm getting older and feeble. I'll start with Betsy Lowry. Betsy was one of the first people I got to know at the city. And it was because of Liberty Quarry and her role in that. And, you know, she has really been a great friend and colleague over the years. Remarkable writer, a remarkable representative of the city and one of the hardest-working people I've ever met. I mean, just incredible. And seeing her move into the city manager's office and work with the city, the manager, the city council in the way she does was one of the best things that could have happened to Temecula. So Betsy, I just, I love you. I think it's been just an incredible journey with you and appreciate all your support. Betsy also works in public information. I'd be remiss not to acknowledge Jonathan Hall. He not only just decimated Zach and I at pickleball, but brutal, brutal. But, but it's just a wonderful guy and has always been here to help keep us in check and help provide the kind of continuity we need at public events and things. So I just, I saw him earlier. I just wanted to throw it out there. He's a great guy. Luisa and Sue Stefan.[1657.12] So I started with Sue Stefan. Luisa's in the back. Luisa, just, I, you know, look, one of the most important things I learned very early in my career was get to know your administrative support folks because your life will depend on them. And, and so, you know, it, it has been an incredible relationship with her. She keeps the city council in check and she's just, just a wonderful person for that office. So cannot speak more highly of her. Public Works. I'll start with Greg Butler because he was the guy who I got to know. Some of you may remember this, maybe you don't, but we actually helped build that Main Street Bridge project and that's how I got to really know Greg the first time around, was he was our sort of administrator for that, that project and my direct contact. And, and boy, I don't think he liked me in the beginning. I don't know, I don't know, maybe he's just, you know, engineers, you can't really read them, but I don't know. But, but I will say he's, he's a, he's a wonderful guy, great person to go golfing with, patient and, and just a wonderful mind and really appreciated working with him. Pat, you know, taking on the reins, I, I can't say more highly how I respect the work you've done for the city. The advocacy you had, the grant writing, the, the work you did on the transportation quarters, taking over a national scale project for our city, it's, it's phenomenal. Tremendous respect for the work you've done and continue doing for this city. Let's see, all of the folks in Public Works, I've gotten to know a lot of those folks over the years, so please pass along to all the staff to my thanks because they were just, they're great folks and kind, very kind people. Mike. You know, I, I enjoyed our conversations, I enjoyed our time together. You keep the city running. I tried not to be a burden in, in IT space and, and break things too often. I tried to minimize my, my technology footprint because I know it's not a good thing when I do. But, you know, it, I mean, you know, again, remarkable folks that you've hired, the talent, the depth of, of your capabilities. And, and not just that, but I made it a point when I first came to the city to just sit down with every department, sit down with directors, sit down with folks, just to get to know them. And I just remember you being so welcoming very early on and you had all these packets together and iPads and things for me and it was overwhelming, but, but you made it so welcoming and, 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 you know, really, really highlighted for me how friendly the city was and how much you cared for the work you do. Isaac. You know, you left us for a little while there, but you came back because I think you love Temecula as much as we all do. But, but also, it, I mean, you know, we've had some great conversations, some great debates. Your advocacy for employees and, and your ability to navigate labor issues and all of that, very talented. And, you know, just to you and your family, I, I cannot thank you enough for your dedication to the city and the work you've done. You know, thank you. Ms. Hennessy. There was a time very early on where I yelled your name out in a meeting in, what would be the term? It was frustration. It was a little frightening for me even coming out of my mouth. I was just like, I didn't know where that came from. And I looked over at you and I was like, oh my gosh, I don't want to come off that way. But you were talking about staffing for firefighters and I had just earlier in my career completed the first ever sort of national study on firefighter staffing. And I was just like, we will not be changing four-person staffing. And I remember just going off on you and afterwards I felt horrible because I realized that's not what you were trying to say or do, but you, you triggered me in this meeting and, you know? And so ever since then, I tried to kind of lighten it up a little bit. I don't know if I ever really accomplished that, but I will say, working with you over the years has been an outstanding experience. You have taken this city into a place financially that I don't think anybody had ever anticipated. You know, our, our success because of what you did, the modeling, I remember, and I, I will take partial responsibility for COVID, okay? Because in 2019, you provided a model to the city of Temecula during our budget hearings that said, this is a projected bad case scenario of what could happen with a recession, this is how we're going to be resilient during that. And I said, can you project a really, really bad case scenario for us to look at? And you did and you ran these different sensitivity models and things and I geeked out on statistics and finances and I think hopefully we share that in common and if not, I apologize. But, and then a year later, less than a year later, we experienced the most devastating thing that could happen financially to this city with an entire shutdown. And man, being able to understand, predict, understand how to be nimble as a city and focus on what needs to be done quickly and efficiently kept us solvent. And we never touched a dollar of those reserve funds. And then as a wrapping on a wonderful present of working with you, you helped create a scheme, not right word, Peter, plan, strategy for paying off facilities debts and zeroing out unfunded pension liabilities. And I was so excited about that. I remember there were like three people left at our council meeting and I was like, stand up everybody because this is, you know, and it just didn't have the drum roll that it needed to. But because of things like that and measures like we've talked about, that forever will be, you know, your imprint on this city and cannot thank you enough for that. Our community development. Luke, you know, I got to know you before you were sitting there and, and in a couple different offices and I'll be honest, I, I way overstepped my, my role as a city council member in my first term. And as the position opened up, I reached out to Aaron and I told him, I don't think there's anybody other than Luke that should be sitting in that chair. Tremendous respect for the work you do, the integrity at which you do it and the candor where you are able to work with our council members and the public and the developers and the consultants and everybody else and run an amazing team of folks in the planning department. Couldn't have thought of anybody else to, to sit in that chair and I was glad that, and I told Aaron, I said, I know I'm overstepping, don't take my advice, it's okay, I won't be offended, do not, but I was thrilled to see you there and you proved, proved me right. Let's see. Who am I missing? Erica Russo. Community Services is, you know, the fun department that I never got to play much with. And, and the only time I did is when you put me on a, a Bobby and, and humiliated me during the ice rink openings every year and made sure I came in last place at the races and, you know, all those fun things that we did together. No, I know, I know, right? I don't think that's why I came in last place. But, but honestly, the, the work you all do, I, I wish I would have spent more time with, there was only so much that we can do as, as a council member. My focus obviously was public safety, infrastructure, finance. I wish I would have spent more time with Community Services because the work you do, I loved all the events, we still love the events. The work you all do there is incredible and I know Kevin, that was your shop at one point as well. And still, you know, the, the imprint that you've all left is, is remarkable and it makes Temecula what it is. I've always said, if you can't get public safety right, we have no business doing anything else, but we got that right. And you have put together these programs and opportunities for our community that, that make it worth, worth living here.
Well, we'll save you a spot in the Bobby races again.
I will be back at the Bobby races and just as a side note, there was one year where Aaron and I were going at it and I really wanted to, to beat him that year and on the ice, I'd actually glued sandpaper to my shoes ahead of the races. I totally cheated, but I could admit that now and, and I really wanted, and I still lost, I still lost. It was amazing. But no, I mean, the work you've done and, and I appreciate everything that you've done for this community to make it so, so beautiful to live. Peter, man, I remember one meeting in particular where I, I feel like if you knew my middle name, you would have used it. And I had slid my chair over to, to talk to you about an item, an issue and, and there was this balance that we had to strike as a council between doing what we, we think is the right thing versus protecting the legal integrity of the city at the same time. And very sternly you said, Matthew, and the only person that calls me that is my mom sitting right there. And, and I listened. Your guidance and counsel over the years has been phenomenal. I will say the city is lucky to have you here and I have, I have been able to see city attorneys throughout this nation and no single one of them will ever compare to you, Peter, hundred percent. So for all the work, absolutely. And I did, I love those times where we're able to like sidebar and have a conversation and kind of geek out on just obscure legal stuff that nobody cared about. But we did and we had fun doing it. So thank you for all of that. Randy, just, you know, so the fun thing about Randy is, is, is that, you know, she's, she's not just an advocate for, for this city and, and her, her occupation, but she continues that. And then she dragged me in to this, this wonderful new opportunity of, of teaching for the City Clerks Association for California through San Marcos. And now all of a sudden I'm a director of a City Clerk Association education program or something? Okay, like I know anything about that, but, you know, I, I just love the fact that we get to continue, you know, working together, of course, but I have spent more than my fair share of time in your office hashing through issues, talking about council meetings, avoiding Brown Act violations. I don't think I ever once submitted my financial forms to the city correctly. I think they've all been amended at least once or on time mostly. So I'm just the worst at that. But, but beyond that, it was just the kindness and the friendship and, and the embracing of, of deep issues in this city that we were able to address together. I can't think of anybody better to represent our, our community. I know elections are difficult, I know there's a lot of scrutiny on what you do here and, and nationally in that process. And for you to stand up and, and show the, the, the integrity, the, the moral character of what you do, it's phenomenal and beyond reproach. And, and beyond that, I just love you as a human being. I promise, I'm running out of people to talk about, I promise I'll be done here shortly. Mr. Hawkins. Damn, it has been an amazing ride and I am honored to have been able to do that with you. You provided council guidance and, and the kind of candor that we need as city council members. Not just when you were sitting in that chair over there, but when you're sitting there today. You, you have been just a phenomenal advocate for what was right. You taught me a lot about myself and you taught me how to be a better council member. I mean, I know you all did that, but this guy, he was kind of always on my ass. And can I say that? Are we, are we live? Okay, well, you know, Brown Act be damned. So, but, you know, I just, it, it has been an incredible experience working with you and the conversations that we've had together to navigate issues that for us, you know, as a city are so consequential, so important and to be able to have you be very honest with me, no matter what, no matter what, you were always very honest. And, and even when our positions and our opinions didn't, didn't click, it didn't matter and I appreciated that. That's really what, you know, I always tried to strive for, was that kind of relationship. Our love of jazz music, our love of New Orleans, I think we have a lot of commonality there and I think that, I will share one pretty funny story about Kevin and kind of embarrassing because, you know, Randy threw up her hands and said, not me. Last year, Fairview Fire in, you know, wine country, we're working on the incident, I get called out because we're doing some work with Cal Fire on that incident. We were at the League of Cities meetings in Long Beach, hotel room, everything out there. I thought I was just leaving for the day to go respond, be a part of that incident and then come back. That never happened. The fire took off, a lot of things, you know, went right and went wrong. But everything, my luggage, my clothing, everything was just kind of left at the hotel room. And so I was like, somebody's going to need to pick that up for me. And Randy was like, no, right? So immediately she made abundantly clear and Kevin, like, just convinced hotel security, all I had to do was call, it's a little frightening, all I did was call and say, I'm Matt Ron, let Kevin into my room and they're like, okay. So a little frightening with the security at the hotel, but this guy picked up my chonies, put them in my bag and brought them back to Temecula. You will never find a more dedicated assistant city manager in the country who had to go do that. And I apologize, I shared that story with everybody, but they need to know the depths at which you will go to do your job.
You told the tiny whitey story.
I will, I will say a quick word about Cal Fire as well. I know Chief Crater, I, I, I love you guy. I appreciate you bringing the firefighters out today, that was very meaningful. And I appreciate the work we've been able to do together. Cal Fire is the largest and, and most remarkable fire department in the United States. I've had a nearly twenty-year working relationship with you all and you represent some of the best of what Cal Fire has to offer. Riverside County is a remarkable unit and I will continue to advocate on behalf of firefighters for health and safety, for behavioral and mental health support services, for PPE and decontamination and cancer risks and all of those things. And it's the heart of the fire service that, that brings me to that. It is one of the most rewarding things I've done in my career because I see the work that we do affecting the lives of firefighters and their families. And your passion and dedication to, to that is, is just, it's the reason I do what I do. So thank you for that and thank everyone at Cal Fire for all the support over the I will, I will also say.
I can't say anything.
Yeah, no, I know, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. I will also say that Sheriff's Department, you know, just as an aside, phenomenal sheriff, phenomenal relationship. I will say that, that we have always had these arguments or debates or whatever you want to call them about local control, about having our own police department, about having all these things in Temecula. If I ever once felt like Cal Fire or Sheriff's Department was not Temecula PD and not Temecula Fire, I would have been the first one advocating to drop the contract and create our own police and fire department. But those folks are so amazing, so professional, worked so closely with us and responded to some of our most important issues, whether it was homelessness or special teams, you know, they even let the, the police dog attack me in front of City Hall once. I mean, it, you know, it was an amazing relationship and the same I will say as an aside for our district attorney. That relationship with the district attorney, reinvest in that relationship. We started down a path where we had opened office space for them at City Hall and all this. Make sure you get back to that because the relationship between our investigators and the DA's office and all of that, facilitating that here at City Hall, fostering those relationships, huge, please, you know, and I see your passion for public safety, please take that on because it's not complete, it needs to go forward. And then I'll say our city manager, you know, I wish I had that video of me. I know it's floating around there, I was so worried it was going to be on the screen. But Aaron, I, you know, just a remarkable person. I'll, I'll tell you that I, I told Aaron very early on, when I got on the city council, that if I'm ever going to substitute my opinion for anybody on the staff side, it better be for a really, really good reason, very thoughtful, very articulate, very well researched. Because you all work on these items a hundred and ten percent. And as a council member, we can't spend that much time, there's so much to oversee and so much to do. And so if we get into the weeds on it, we have to have a good reason for, for rejecting your recommendations and your counsel and guidance. And very rarely did that ever happen. And when it did, it was usually something that was either, you know, that we could, we could always figure out. I also told you very early on that, and I don't know if I can say that word or not, probably not. No, okay, he's shaking his head. So I, I also told him, Aaron, if I'm ever being, you know, expletive, say it. Let me know that I've crossed a line, let me know that I am not thinking about something clearly, let me know that I am not being a good person. Because this job, this responsibility can, can erode you personally. You know, we sat in your office dealing with a couple of issues and I, I won't mention them tonight, but they tugged at our souls. And we had to make some choices on more than one occasion where the decision we made was going to forever impact someone's life, but we did it because we were, what, going to protect the city, protect our legal defense, protect whatever it was. And him and I would sit down and we would have these conversations and then we would do what we thought was the right thing. And Peter, I'm sorry to say that we would throw risk to the wind and, and, and hope for the best. And you know what? Doing the right thing always paid dividends. Not only did it keep our soul intact, but it turned out to be the right thing ultimately and, and really was proud moments shared with you. You know, it's funny because somebody brought up, Lori Stone brought up my old campaign promises and stuff. When I was deciding whether or not to run for city council again, I actually, not surprisingly, dug up all of those forms and things and found my spreadsheets back from 2013. And I realized that all of the things that I came to Temecula wanting to do on the city council were accomplished, save one, Old Town Parking. I, I still think we haven't accomplished that, so after my cooling off period, I'll be back to talk about that. But, you know, we did that and so much more. And I realized it's, it's time to move on and, and do other things in my life. Do I miss it? No, absolutely. And then I don't. You know, I got my life back. The only stress in my life is self-imposed and I can live with that. The, the challenges that you all are facing are real challenges. The, the challenges that you all are facing are real challenges. City council is exactly what you make it. I, you know, Mike Nigar, Jeff Comachero, Chuck Washington, Marianne Edwards, you know, I learned so much from you all in my first, you know, years on the council. Everybody says, oh, he's a smart guy. No, I'm not. I, I, I fake it most of the time. But you taught me a lot. You taught me what it meant to love this city. And I could never thank you all enough for that. But being on the city council, it is what you want it to be, what you make it. And if you're willing to take the time to develop those relationships, sit down and grab a cup of coffee, it's, it's yours to do some amazing things that you never thought would ever, ever actually happen. If you love Temecula, Temecula loves you back. And I know you all do, you know, I, I was happy, lucky and honored to be a part of a growing legacy of contributions that built the strong foundations that City Hall and this community stand on today. Those foundations get tested, sometimes they waver. But we did a lot of work to make sure we had the right engineering to put that together. And looking around this city council, looking around this staff, I know that those foundations are going to stay strong because of your dedication and love for this community. I know it's not always easy. I know it struggles at times. And I know that it's a challenge to be here, to make those decisions and to navigate some of those consequential issues facing our nation. But we're doing it here in Temecula and I'm so proud of you all for the work that you've done to be able to maintain those foundations. I see the vigor in all of you. I know that you are just an amazing group of folks dedicated to the same dream and promise that we all had in our hearts when we came here, moved our families here and dedicated our life to this public service. I thank you all for the opportunity to serve this community. I look forward to serving in a different capacity and bugging you more in the very near future on other issues. And I look forward to working toward the betterment of, of our community and, and the advancement of everyone at large. I thank you all for the opportunity to have you as my family.
Matt, we have two more presentations that I'm going to come down and hand you and then we're going to adjourn this meeting and go next door for some cupcakes and treats.
Yeah, look at that, you got that. So we'd go ahead and like to present this city proclamation to you, Matt Ron, for your dedicated service. And you get a day. Matt Ron Day, everybody. Today is Matt Ron Day.
Every day is Matt Ron Day.
That's what we say. And then one last thing. I don't know if you're going to be able to guess what this is, but this is our favorite.
Oh, it is. Oh, boy. I'm going to confuse all of our neighbors to put this up today. Nobody's going to know what's going on.
I'll have to put it up.
HOA is going to be like, what is that about? Don't care.
Okay, everyone, we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at nine fifty, I'm sorry, eight fifty-four to our next meeting. And please join us next door for some refreshments and conversation. We are adjourned.